...be given by Reverend Jacob Smith with Victory Temple of Beaumont, Texas. And it's his first time here today, so welcome. And if everyone would please silence their cell phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given and provided to us. I pray today that you would bless this meeting, this council, this leadership of this great city with your favor, your wisdom, your direction today. I pray that in all things, in all decisions, Lord, that you're glorified. We know truly that it's your counsel, your word, that stands sure and remains forever. We thank you today for all that you have done, and, Lord, what we believe that you'll continue to do in this great city. We thank you for your faithfulness, and truly today, we ask all of these things in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner, absent. Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel, absent. And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Today, we have two proclamations and a presentation from our Communication Department. First, we'll have a proclamation recognizing the month of January as Crime Stoppers Awareness Month.
Whereas since 1976, Crime Stoppers programs have empowered citizens across our state to take a stand against crime in their communities. And whereas these programs bring together law enforcement agencies, citizens, and news media to solve crimes and bring criminals to justice. And whereas in 1981, Crime Stoppers of Beaumont was started and has expanded to cover Jefferson, Orange, Harden, and Jasper Counties. And whereas for the first time in history, Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas received over 2,000 tips, ending the year of 2023 with 2,094 tips. And whereas many Crime Stoppers organizations also have campus programs that strive to protect our students and young people by reducing crime in schools and working diligently to keep school communities safe. And every year, the month of January is dedicated to raising awareness of Crime Stoppers, successes, and motivating more Texans to get involved in keeping their communities safe. Now, therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim this month of January as Crime Stoppers Awareness Month in Beaumont, Texas, and encourages all of our citizens to join us as he applauds all of the hard work that Crime Stoppers does. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and calls the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed on this day, January 9th, 2024.
Accepting will be Jeremy Raely, Administrator and Campus Coordinator for Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas, and a host of board members. Y'all come up as well.
All right, y'all, on one. Look right here, one, two, and three. One more, one, two, three. Excellent. One, two, three.
Real quick, Mayor West and Council, thank y'all so much for recognizing Crime Stoppers of Southeast Texas. But, you know, without the partnership between Crime Stoppers and the Beaumont Police Department and the other municipalities and law enforcement agencies throughout Southeast Texas and the state and even the country, we wouldn't be successful. The tips that come in guaranteeing anonymity for all tipsters is the backbone of our program. But the detectives out there and the law enforcement are what really help our tips get solved. They're the ones that close it out and make sure that justice is served. Ours is just a small extra tool in their tool belt to get that accomplished. And, you know, as I look over here at Ms. Carol Riley and everything, you know, she was a very, very instrumental part of our program for many years and still continues to do that with just Beaumont PD. And I'd like to say, you know, with today also being National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, thank you and the other officers that are all out there protecting our communities and everything. And again, thank y'all so very much for recognizing our program. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeremy. And now, we have a proclamation recognizing National Human Trafficking Awareness Month and celebrating the work across the border by the Junior League of Beaumont and the Lake Charles Junior League.
Whereas human trafficking is a public health issue that exploits the most vulnerable among us and weakens the health and well-being of individuals, families, and communities across generations. And more than 20 years since the passing of the Trafficking Victims Protection Act, human trafficking still exists, including the forced or fraudulent recruitment harboring or transportation of people for labor or commercial sex. And whereas an estimated 27.6 million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, including cases of human trafficking reported in every U.S. state and territory. And human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are disproportionately at risk, including affected by abuse, violence, poverty, unstable living situations, social disconnection, or discrimination. And whereas people can be trafficked in person and online in industries such as restaurants, domestic work, construction, agriculture, and factories by strangers or someone they know, including employers, partners, and family members. And whereas human trafficking can be prevented by building individual community and social understanding and resilience, reducing social inequities, and addressing conditions that contribute to exploitation. And whereas in the month of January, the Junior League of Beaumont, together with Lake Charles Junior League, will be working for ways to end human trafficking across the border and beyond for good. Now, therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim the month of January as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Beaumont, Texas, and reaffirms our commitment to increase awareness and education in human trafficking, make resources available to assist individuals and communities impacted by human trafficking, and build diverse public-private partnerships to support a more comprehensive response to prevent and respond to human trafficking. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and calls the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed, signed this day, January 9th, 2024.
And accepting will be Michelle Kuhn Matheson, who is the abolish chair for the Junior League of Beaumont, as well as, you're welcome to bring up the other Junior League members that are with you as well.
All righty. Yes. Did you have anybody else? All righty, I'll look right here, and one, two, three. I'll do one more. One, two, and three. Thank you. Of course. All righty, I'm one, two, and three. All right, I got seven.
We just wanted to say thank you for the support of the city, and we are excited to continue to create events that will bring awareness to sex trafficking. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Tanya. And now, we have a communications update from Lauren Moniz, Director of Communications for the City of Beaumont.
You'll get it one of these weeks.
I know. I'm getting so close. I'm all around the last name.
Until I get married, and then you could have a whole new name.
That's right.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year, all. We're excited to be back with the announcements for the week of January 9th. Save the date and join us for the first public meeting of the proposed Downtown Hotel and Convention Center project on February 13th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Event Center. Hear from the consultant, share your ideas, and make your thoughts heard. If you can't make it or want to give your input in advance, you can always submit ideas of what you want to see downtown and take our pledge to say you're a Bo lever at beaumontvision2035.com, which is where we'll be updating all the downtown project information. New year, new you. Are you taking advantage of all the free offerings around the city to help with your resolutions? The library has learning backpacks that can be checked out for family game nights or crafts, and your library card gives you access to much more than just books, including 200,000 audiobooks and the language learning app Mango. Cattail Marsh, run by the Convention and Visitors Bureau, has free weekly yoga classes, kids crafts and programs, and hiking bike trails. And the Lakeside Center is a free community center for residents with art, fitness, and technology classes. Geared towards seniors, all citizens are welcome to participate. Edible fruit trees were planted at parks around the city is an innovative way to combat food deserts. Peach trees were planted at Rogers Park. Thigs were planted at Charlton Pollard. Pear trees were planted in Sprott Park to put pears back in pear orchard. And citrus will be planted at Klein Park in a few weeks with the hope of adding seasonal vegetables this spring. And the city will be closed January 15th for MLK Day. We hope you enjoy the rest of your week.
Thank you. And for those that are here for the recognitions and proclamations and would like to leave, now's the time to do so, and thank you for coming. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda and regular agenda items, one through five, or any other topic. Item six and seven have already been heard in public hearing, and therefore, persons cannot speak on these items. You're reminded to three, you're limited to three minutes when you walk up to the podium. Please state your name and your address and your city. The green light will come on, and the red light will turn on when your time is up.
I'm Victor Fulton.
Hello. My name is Victor Fulton. I reside at, what is my address? 5690 Jackie Lane, Beaumont, Texas. I'm also the senior pastor at Shallow Missionary Baptist Church at 1995 Blanchett, which brings me here to the mayor, the council, city manager, city attorney, assistant, public works director, city clerk. I thank y'all for what you do. I need to say that real quick because I'm really, really pleased with what this council has been doing, the things that y'all are putting together, where you're working together, you're not coming here bickering and arguing. Keep it back down, get out here with a united face, and people can follow you. We appreciate that. I just want you to know that. I'm here to talk to you real big, real quick about service, and I'm going to go like this. March 23 to April 23, my usage was 100 at the church, 100 gallons. April to May, 100 gallons. May to June, 100 gallons. July to August, 1,300 gallons. That's 1,000 gallons more. Really didn't raise an eyebrow because, okay, maybe someone, I don't know. August to September, 38,300 gallons. 300 sounds right. The 38,000 is more water than it takes to fill an Olympic pool. At Shallow Missionary Baptist Church, we are not placed on an island with water around us. We do not have water coming up to the ceilings inside the church. If I employed someone 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to flush the seven toilets that we have located in the church, given account for the time it takes for the toilets to refill, and the amount of time that this billing period is in, it would not amount to 38,000 gallons of water. I reached out to a council member. I didn't hear anything back. I don't know if they told someone to contact me, but I didn't hear anything back. I came up here. I've spoken to the, I tried to get in touch with the supervisor. He was not, as a matter of fact, no one would see me. I came up to the city manager's office and talked to the secretary or someone there. They sent me back down to talk to the supervisor, to the service manager. He was about to go on appointment, so he sent me to the supervisor. We sat down and talked. We didn't make any headway about that time. The guy comes back in, or the manager comes back in. We sit down, we talk. He says that during the time when the 1,000 gallon spike happened, they were doing some service right down the road. Remember the lady that was on TV that said her water bill was up? Okay? It was by her house. She had a water bill similar. She's also a member of the church. And it was recognized that that number was extraordinarily high. Four months later, I'm still getting the bill for the amount charging me for 38,000 gallons of water. Now, either somebody needed to give me 38,000 gallons of water.
Reverend, I appreciate it. We are limited to three minutes. Somebody from the city will follow up with you.
Well, I appreciate it, and I'm going to be obedient. I'm going to go sit down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Attention. All right?
I'm David Pete.
David Pete, 6355 Shin Lane, Beaumont, Texas. Greetings, Mayor, council, and everyone. I submitted a request to the city attorney in regards to items on agenda. And I know there's been said over and over again that you, council, cannot respond to the community unless it's on the agenda. Well, what I'm about to speak on is on the agenda concerning four or five of the, on the consent agenda, concerning consideration for appointments to these different committees. My question to each of the council members, the selection that you have put forth, have those individuals been, have they been, you know, subject to any type of application? Or were they subject to any vetting to where you are pointing them to these committees? If so, then why hasn't it not been made known to the community if there's someone would like to be on the committees that you're about to vote on? So I'm asking each of you council members that you are privy to answer this because it's on the agenda. So Mr. Durio, Mr. Getz, Mr. John, excuse me, Pastor Felschah, Ms. Samuels, Ms. Neal. So if any of you have a question and you want to respond to that, are you vetting these people that you are about to appoint to these committees on item E through item L? So if anyone would like to respond, it is proper. And if you're not willing to respond, then it just tells me that we're just going through the motions of saying that, oh, you can't respond to something if it's not on the agenda versus what is on the agenda. So I asked, I sent it to the city attorney, and I know she had a chance to respond, but that is the proper way to address it. So I'm putting it forth to the council members. Do you have a vetting process for these people?
We will be able to respond during the consent agenda, but we don't want to burn your time because if we talk right now, you don't get to finish.
Well, I mean, that's fine, but I'm just simply saying, while you're not responding, I mean, someone can respond. You can go ahead and, you know, consume my time, but it is proper. And so I just want to make sure that we're going, we're going to be doing this thing right, okay? Because this is what you've been saying for every time, that you cannot respond if it's not on the agenda. And the county attorney has made it clear that only if it's on the agenda that you can respond to a question from a citizen on a public hearing. So it's open, but everybody is sitting there as though, I mean, you know. So, but I'm expecting a response after I complete. So make sure you respond.
Thank you, sir.
Denise Doggett.
I'm Denise Doggett, and I live at 204 Calhoun, and I'm right off of McLean. It's a dead-end street, and then you have to turn on Calhoun to go left. It's the only way you can go. My complaint is, I know we have a dog issue on McLean. I was not notified of no mail. I have, District 6 has literally tore up my yard. I have no driveway, and they're still working on all of this, and now they're asking us to put in mailboxes. I have no ditch to put a mailbox in because they're still working on my street. And Mr. West, I know that you are meeting with the supervisor at the post office in animal control on Friday. I just ask that somebody notify people when they're going to not deliver our mail and that we need to go to Walden Road to get it, and that I do have dogs. My dogs are in my yard. They're fenced in, and I'm outside with them every time they go outside. And so I'm just asking for help because of the ditch problem. They're not done. They haven't finished that project. I need help. I can't put a mailbox in when I can't put one in. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan Clark.
I'm here to talk about the Park on Calder, the pollution in our Oak Historic District. Their level of noise is considered to be a nuisance. Statutory nuisance is more than an annoyance or an irritation. In fact, it is a disturbance that interferes significantly with your right to enjoy your home. In fact, statutory nuisance has no fixed levels of noise. Park on Calder goes up to 85, 90 decimals at night, late at night. Local ordinance vary, but if you are making noise past a certain hour or decimal level, you, your noise can be heard beyond your property line, and you can be cited. The Park on Calder music noise travels past all of their property lines. Beaumont Noise Ordinance Article 12.08 explains what 70 decibel sounds like. Get close to your washing machine, your dishwasher, 70 decimals. Your vacuum cleaner can be 70 to 80. These household machines make moderate noise levels. At long, 70 decimal levels for long extended periods and repeated exposure can become disturbing to us. A 70-decibel level sound can raise your blood pressure, affect your concentration, as well as other health problems. Beaumont, Texas Law Article 1208 Noise, 12.08.007, exceptions to 1208. The following are activities shall be exempt. Noise Level Rule Regulations: Light Industry, Heavy Industry. Park on Calder is not either. He's not in a central business district, so he can't claim that either. Remember, the statutory nuisance law, a disturbance that interferes significantly with your right to enjoy your home. No fixed levels of noise required for statutory nuisance. Park on Calder refuses to lower their music, keeping it within property lines. They should be considered a statutory nuisance. Are they being cited for noise? How many citations? Remember, we are not his customers, yet the Park on Calder is dictating to the Oak Historic District residents what music they have to assault us with. Remember, while many children are asleep, loud, foul, bass-beating, horn-blowing music is being pumped into their sleeping brains. We are all taxpayers who are being assaulted with music that we do not choose to listen to. The Park on Calder has every right to play what they want, but to their customers. The Park on Calder does not have the right to force us to listen to their music. Beaumont must do better. We should not be assaulted in our homes, beds, yards with foul music we do not want to hear. You can hear this music two to three blocks away. We have recordings of the music. We have noise machines that read it. We are being assaulted with music we did not ask for. The Park on Calder has a restaurant bar license. They do not have a club license. Did Beaumont City Council give? Well, you have the rest of it.
Thank you, ma'am.
James Callis.
Men of council, Mayor West, city staff, and guests, Happy New Year to you all. I am James Callis, lifelong resident. I live on Rosemary off Plant Road, and I want to thank the council for all the consideration they gave me last year, and hopefully I can get a little bit this year. My concern has always been about red-tag houses. I'm a member of the Homeless Coalition, and we've gotten a lot done, but there's still a lot to do. So my issues today, this is the current list of red-tag houses, about 400, 374 to be exact. This is a list of the houses city tore down last year, approximately $5,000 a house that could have been contributed to rebuilding some of these houses. This is 70 houses torn down. This is a list of the houses that were rehabbed, and there's actually people in them now. My house is the second one on the list. I've only been able to get one completed so far. I have four to my own and two that I'm the master plumber on. So I'm asking that the council, since we're trying to take care of the homeless population, and I must have missed a meeting, Charlie Crab told me about it out in the hall, but if we've got to have plumbing in these shelters for the homeless, it should be a lot easier to have them in these houses. And these houses make the best, what we'd call affordable housing. So I would like for there to be consideration beyond just setting the houses out as red-tag and demolishing them. There is a cost. I think the government is subsidizing it, but nonetheless, there's a cost. I'd like to bring this attention, this to the attention of council. This is the cost of our water meter and sewer. I just bought a water meter for one of my projects. I got it bought cheap. I paid $1,049. They're now $1,570 for a one-inch tap. And a one-inch tap is really a lot of water. So, and the sewer taps now are 1,820. Now, I know we've gone through an inflation, and I'm not sure exactly why the city raised these rates. Now, when I work outside of the city, these things cost equivalent, sometimes more. But the last thing I'd leave you with, the Scout Old Timers Association of Southeast Texas is having its 100th meeting this coming Saturday, the 27th. We're trying for a proclamation like the two organizations, and we did get a result from the city, but it didn't seem like we could actually have the proclamation. That's really what we'd like. So I'm still working on that. But I want to thank the council for all that they did for me directly and the people I've been working for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie Crab.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. My name's Charlie Crab. I live at 928 East Drive, 77706. Happy New Year to everyone in attendance. It's another nice day in Beaumont, our town. Say, let's see, what else? Oh, yeah, there was a lot of good concern this afternoon that I heard, and we need a good ombudsman. I may be the man. Okay, let's go on with some little business here. Oh, I want to mention the asphalt patch on North Pearl in front of St. Mark's Episcopal Church in the parking lot came out real smooth. Asphalt is king. What about Fourth Street? This is a completion month. I turned south on Fourth Street from college the other day and experienced a very smooth drive to Corley Street. I did not have to guide my car down to Corley because Fourth was so smooth. My car also liked the little square flaps on the, on the, on the street rather than the lines. Avenue C and Avenue A could still use a facelift. I'm recommending an inch and a half asphalt. And Councilman Durio, would you look into that for me? Let's see. Oh, the edible citrus trees in the parks. Oh, the edible citrus trees in the parks are a great idea. I'm looking forward to pick, I hope they're sapsumas. Okay, I just have a little, little time left. I'd like to read the lyrics of a favorite song of mine. "I see trees of green, red roses too. I see them bloom for me and you, and I think to myself, what a wonderful world. I see skies of blue and clouds of white, and bright blessed days and dark sacred nights. I think to myself, what a wonderful world. The colors of the rainbow so pretty in the sky, also on the faces of people going by. I see friends shaking hands, saying, how do, how do you do? They're really saying, I love you. And I think to myself, what a wonderful world. I hear babies cry, I watch them grow. They'll learn much more than I'll ever know. I think to myself, what a wonderful world. Yes, I think to myself, what a wonderful world."
Thank you.
Yes. Those were recorded by Louis Armstrong. More, more of that story later.
Albert Harrison.
Albert Harrison, fourteen, twelve forty Ashley Avenue, Beaumont, Texas. Mayor, city council, other city staff, other concerned citizens. I have a couple of comments. One of my comments are pertaining to the consent agenda, to whereas I understand that you are considering on changing days or for city council meetings. I'd like to basically state that on that particular ordinance, I voted against it. I do not think that city council at this time is transparent enough to go to two council meetings a month. I think it should be maybe two a week, really, to be honest about it. My other comment is basically pertaining to, since I'm down to one vehicle now, and I depend on the special transit system, also I'm a vet, so I can ride it free. The wait time for a car to get scheduled on that particular transit system, as long as I've been on, on that wait time, has been approximately one hour and ten minutes. The shortest time I've been on it has been about twenty minutes. So my, in my opinion, I think that should be something addressed that took issue, to whereas individuals do not have to wait so long to get told sometimes there's nothing available for you for the time you need to go where, where you gotta go. My other comment is pertaining to water pressure. My particular home, for some reason or another, I have a commode that's one of those push-button type commodes. I had a plumber to come out. He told me the water pressure is not strong enough to operate that particular type of commode. I noticed him walking here, I did walk here, so I passed in front of Julie Rogers Theater. I noticed that only one of the pumps that pump water up is working. The other one is not. So it tells me even, city doesn't have, does not have enough water pressure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Jerome Alexander.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Happy New Years to everybody. Jerome, Arizona, Level eighteen, Everlawn Street, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 zero one. I come in to accept the record straight. Last time I came, a couple weeks ago, Councilman Turner, we had a little talk, and you, you, Mr. Samuel, he got offended to the point to where I was talking about the Salvation Army and the football organization. Well, this was told to me when the, when the campaign, everything was going on. The mayor told me, we helped me get the football, the scoreboard fixed. Mr. Samuel, he tried to help me get the, the field back, which he asked me, did I have insurance? Because I had a fallout with the captain at, at the meeting when Mr. Gitch wasn't at the homeless meeting. He came up, and he asked, what's the problem? And I told him what the problem, he trying to take the field for us because we don't got no money to give to him, right? And I told him all about a money issue. So they, when I came, he asked me, he said, he asked the man to send him an email. He never sent him the email. So he asked me to bring the insurance. I brought the insurance up here to him, he was having a meeting. So I brought the insurance. When I brought the insurance, he said, well, Jerome, I don't think I can really do nothing because we ain't a part of Salvation Army. I said, they be getting donations. So then I went to the mayor, I said, sir, we had a problem. I have to feel, he said, Jerome, I'm gonna try to help you. So he asked me, he said, send me the email to what's the question you need to ask? I said, because they getting money, but we not, the kids not getting no program. We don't get nothing. They getting money allocated for the program, but there's nothing going on. So it's still nothing going on. So when I came up here, brother, the reason why I came up, because they promised some things, and now the things, he did what he said he did, but then when I came and I told you about, as a leader, brother, as a leader, and as the city of Beaumont, I want to know why, that I would go and say, why we, why would you take the field away from us? What's the reason? He told them because it was trash, right? We trashed the field, okay? I waited for that, I sent them pictures and showed, excuse me, I sent them pictures and showed them every time after the games it was cleaned up. I sent them the other decent pictures. Then I told him he can go ask the church man across the street, because I made sure he, he let us use the parking lot, everything was clean. So they kept using excuses, excuses. So the, as a community, we don't, the kids don't have nowhere to go after school, brother. So now I want to know why, and that's why I came, as leaders, y'all should sit down with him and ask him why we can't use the field no more. Ms. Muton got the field for us. We didn't have no problem. Then when he came over there, Captain Vega, now some money is, I mean, they not use it. It's no boxing, it's no football, it's nothing. So what is they there for? So I just asked, I come and ask y'all if y'all hear, y'all hear me? I guess the best, but y'all can, but I'm asking y'all to look at the issue. Somebody need to talk to him and see what the real issue, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Andrus.
Mayor, Mayor Roy West, congratulations and city council. I thank you for the pleasure of being able to speak today. This past Friday at nine AM, approximately nine AM in the morning, I was riding on the correct side of the road. I'm hot natured, I'm a U.S. Navy disabled vet, armed and discharged, I'm not a felon. And I was struck at between forty-five and fifty-five miles an hour by someone hitting blow horn. Ended up at St. Ease. The gentleman did not hit and run, because I've never known who hit me or what hit me. I thought it was an RPG. I'm a combat vet. I made SEAL in the Navy. I'm not a felon. And he felt remorse. He stopped and called. Precinct was there within five minutes. Took me to St. Elizabeth, they saved my life. Yesterday, I spent all day at Michaela Lea Bakery in Houston. I have a broken rib here. My sternum is cracked. My ankle swollen so bad, I thought I was gonna die. This past weekend, I went through more pain since I did Black Ops overseas and was in a coma. When they pulled the plug on me and pronounced me dead, I vomited out the respiratory, but grace of God, I walked out that place that day. But today, on the way walking to go at the Jefferson County Courthouse, I apologize that I started my nose is broken, been broken by one of these gang bangers two and a half years ago. He finally was sent back to Washington State murdered. I was attacked by a gang banger who accused me of killing one of my best friends, Johnny Thomason, mechanic who was murdered. His body was found somewhere in this area. So I ask you, God means good oriented direction to you. I like Mayor Muton, and Mayor, I respect you. You have gray hair, you live long enough to get it. When is something gonna be do about these people using ethnic background? All inside your veins, all our blood is purple when it meets air. Only thing I got, the guy wanted to kill me, accused me of murder when I respect authority, was almost got his ass killed. Excuse my English. But I understand you're fighting erosion. You're not the only city in the world that's having their old cast iron sewer collapsing into their cast iron water lines. And you take your water to Culligan Man, they'll test it to find out what elements harming people. So I ask you, please, there are more places, and it's not your fault, I'm not playing here playing a blame game. I hold people responsible for their own actions. When, there's one place to treat us vets, and you're all vets. I look at you all as servants. You have more places to treat dogs here. When are we gonna get a little respect that we give you? The officer showed up, I came, come to the city council meeting, I'm late, I apologize. I'll make this brief. When are you gonna stand up and say, all lives are not a deficit to a foreign country? And I'm not knocking China, I get acupuncture with the Beaumont Acupuncture and Herbal Medicine Clinic. Realize your life is priced as mine is too, and stand up and do is right and quit just one meeting. I came here one day, and when Mayor Muton, I said, I, from memory, quoted the preamble of the Constitution. She never said a word. The councilmen sat there and argued the rest of the meeting about what the Beaumont enterprise and what we're gonna do about the meeting time. Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else that signed up to speak whose name I did not call before we close the public comments? I have no one, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
No move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Turner, then Councilman Gess.
Question for the city attorney. Is it appropriate if we wanted to look at other options on these city council dates to vote now or move it separately and discuss it?
You'd have to pull the item to discuss it separately so you can make adjustments to it.
Okay, well, I would like to make a motion, see if I can get some support to move the item and approve it separately due to the date that, due to the fact that we have three scheduled meeting dates a day before or a day after a national holiday.
I'm assuming you're referring to item B.
Yes, ma'am, item B. I apologize.
So Councilman Samuel made the motion, so either he would need to amend his motion to have it vote separately or?
I, I will amend my motion to approve consented item except B, and we'll vote on B separately. That's my motion.
Thank you.
Councilman Dario.
Councilman Gess.
Ms. Reed, is it appropriate that I can respond to Mr. Pete at this time?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pete, when I appoint somebody on one of the commissions or one of the boards that we have appointment ability to do so, I do know the person, I vetted the person myself, so that's the answer to your question.
Councilman Felschel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification to the city attorney, it was my understanding during public comments, we were not to respond. Could you bring a little clarity to that for Mr. Pete? Perhaps we can, and I just misunderstood.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Reed, I don't know that I've received the email yet, but in response, Ms. Pete and I have talked about why council doesn't respond to council comment, or council, I'm sorry, public comments made while they're speaking, but it's our general practice that A, we don't respond during their comments to allow for them to have their full three minutes, and so there's no back and forth with that. Also, for open meeting purposes, council can only respond to posted items, which is why it was appropriate for Councilman Gess to respond to an item that was posted. Generally, when there are questions from the public that deal with a item that is posted, council will try to either get that information from staff or address those comments during this process right now, so.
But technically, legally, after the, the citizen is finished with their three minutes, if they address a posted item, could we comment then?
Yes, how it has been our practice not to encourage a dialogue between council and citizens, just to avoid getting off track. Sometimes that conversation could go beyond the posted item, and to avoid that, and to make sure that there's an equal three minutes. So for example, if the, if a citizen's at the podium and they ask the question and you answered, it becomes really hard for the clerk at that time to then decipher whether or not they spoke for three, full three minutes as opposed to y'all had a conversation for three minutes. We allow our individuals to, our citizens, our guests, to speak for a full three minutes. And so if she has to stop the clock every time you, our councilperson wants to respond, and then restart the clock every time they answer a question, technically, they're getting more than the full three minutes than another person, and then we would have to, again, allow for consistency and fairness in allowing that to happen with every single citizen, which makes for a very long meeting.
Thank you. And to Mr. Pete, please know that when I make appointments, also as Councilman Gess said, I do the best to my ability to make sure that I'm appointing citizens that are highly respected and qualified. And if someone's not serving, as perhaps their schedule would, if they're not serving like they need to, perhaps because of their schedule, I don't reappoint. I, I haven't reappointed some people, just because their, their schedule may, may not allow them to attend the meetings like they should. And so as Councilman Gess said, I, I do the best I can. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dario.
Yeah, two questions. For one, yeah, Mr. Pete, me, me as well, because when we appoint people to these committees, they're my representative. So I'm vetting, I'm gonna make sure that they're a good representative of myself, and they're gonna do a good job for the city on that committee. But also, those committee appointments, that's totally up to the council members, correct?
So some of the ordinances that allow for, that are established by the committee or that, sorry, the committees that are established by ordinance do have criteria for the individual. I mean, just use, for example, the tourism board asks for certain type of appointments, but generally, the appointments are at the discretion of council.
And also, if anyone would like to be considered for an appointment, we do it every year, and you could send an email in if you would like to be considered to be appointed to a certain committee.
Yeah, council, appointment terms for committees typically run for about two, two years. So September thirtieth of 2026 will be the end of this next cycle. So they should actually email you before then.
I would simply say, many of my appointments are from individuals who's asked me to serve in some capacity, and I make the decision, and I stand with the decisions that I make and my recommendations. If they're, if they meet the qualifications, then I normally appoint.
And lastly, Mr. Pete, I'm gonna respond to you out of respect, and I got a high level of respect for you. Most of my appointments are highly vetted, but I do have individuals who have requested, and I have literally switched almost eighty, ninety percent of my appointments, so I have a completely new appointments than I did the first term. I feel like we got a lot of talent in Beaumont. I feel like everybody deserve opportunity to serve.
Any other comments? And also, Mr. Pete, I've received, I've received a number of requests and vetted all the appointments that I've had the privilege to make as mayor since I got elected, so. And so, all in favor of approving consent agenda, removing item B? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item B? Begin with one.
Thank you, Mayor. Council to consider approving the calendar for the fiscal year 2024 city council meetings, and we're recommending approval, but with discussion from Councilmember Turner.
The only case I kind of want to plead to the council and make sure we really take this in strong consideration is you have President's Day on two nineteen, two nineteenth, and we have a meeting literally on the twentieth following President's Day, the second, and that's a national holiday, the second national holiday is Juneteenth. You have Juneteenth, and you have a meeting literally a day af, a day before Juneteenth. And the third one is Labor Day in September. We have Labor Day on September second, and we have a council meeting, council meeting on September third. I just want council to consider we have staff that have to prepare for these meetings, and holidays, they often take out, take off. I think this is an opportunity to kind of show a little appreciation to our staff, where they can be better prepared for our meeting. So my recommendation was to move the February twenty meeting, which is the day after, to February twenty seventh, the following week. The June eighteenth meeting, which is the day before Juneteenth, to June twenty fifth, the following Tuesday. And the September third meeting to September tenth, which is the following Tuesday. And really, out of respect for the citizens, and it's a holiday, if they're traveling, they can't make it, and staff that may be traveling and celebrating for the holiday, I just ask council to strongly consider that.
Councilman Felschel.
First of all, I appreciate Councilman Turner's concern. I, I, that's, that is something I think that has to be looked at. Could the city manager speak to this on behalf of the staff? Is this a issue for them? I'm sure there's always gonna be a holiday of the staff? Is this a issue for them? I'm sure there's always going to be a holiday, especially the second tier, what I would call second tier holidays like President's Day. That's not, you know, that's, but the others, I, I think are ones that definitely have to be considered. But could you speak to this for us and help us as a council to understand, is this an issue?
Sure, Councilmember Felschel, and I thank Councilmember Turner for being considerate of staff. That's, that's really good to hear. In the past, we've stayed away from days before or days after council meetings, but now we have a new agenda preparation system, which allows us to get it done quicker and easier, and it takes less planning than it did in the past. Like, you know, it's just a matter of days, we can get it done, and the week before. So it's not as important in that respect to staff anymore. As far as preparation time, it's not. It does impact if someone's traveling the day before or day after, for sure. But as far as preparation, with this new, I call it automated agenda prep system, we, we can, we get it done in, you know, a matter of hours now, the week before.
Councilman Getz? Councilman Samuel, after that.
I'm glad that we are keeping up with the times and automating our system, but I thought the whole reason that we were considering going to every other week was because it was taking a lot of staff time to prepare the agendas, and if, if we've actually improved that ability, why are we considering going to every other week?
Now, it's not so much the staff time for preparation of the agenda, it's just staff time in general, that it frees us up to do things and work on other projects. It wasn't just the preparation of the agenda. That, that's a small part of what we do in some situations, but this just allows us to, to do that. You know, we, we still have the three night meetings in there, for sure, and we were considerate of New Year's Eve. It was on the, the day before council meeting, so we, we didn't set that one for that particular reason. But, you know, we, we do as council pleases, but those dates shouldn't greatly impact staff.
Councilman Samuel?
Well, I, I've seen these calendars for a number of years now, and when I accepted the position to serve, it wasn't so much about me, but it was about the people. And one of the things that I have a concern about, just knowing now, I'm a little older, and for me to remember, is it every second and fourth Tuesday, or is it the first and third Tuesday, or are we having a meeting this day? And I'm thinking, citizens, they know that was a time all this time. They know on Tuesdays, normally, there are meetings. I can understand, we don't need to have a meeting just to have a meeting. But for some people, the knowledge of just getting into the habit of knowing when there is a council meeting would be to their benefit. But it's not for our convenience. We've had council meetings before Christmas, after Christmas, other holidays. So for me, that comes with the territory. So it's what's best to get the most people here. And if people don't know, is this one of those days that they don't have a meeting? Is this the second Tuesday? So it doesn't matter to me, but in my thinking, what is going to be best for the citizens? And they need to have a pretty standard idea of when we're going to have a meeting.
Councilman Felschel?
Councilman Samuel, are you, are you then supporting consistency as in every month is the second and, well, second and fourth Tuesday of the month, or are you advocating for weekly meetings?
Okay. I have no problems with.
Bi-weekly?
I have no problem with weekly meetings.
Okay.
What I do have a problem with is not being consistent, because it's inconsistent. Now, it's first, no, it's.
First and third.
First, third, and fifth, if there's a fifth.
Right.
So that's it. If it's every Tuesday, I know every Tuesday, I got to be here. But is this the first Tuesday, or is this the second Tuesday? Some people have problems with that. I do, but I write it down. So that's where I am at.
So you're just calling for consistency?
I just want consistency.
Okay, and Councilman Duryo?
I just want to be sure about this. Didn't the citizens vote for this on during the charter vote?
So the charter was amended to say that the council would meet as necessary, as opposed to meeting every Tuesday. The previous language called for every Tuesday. The language was amended to say as necessary.
Okay. And also, on these holidays, President's Day, is that a day that the staff is off? Are they off on President's Day?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
They are? Okay. But none of these are set on holidays, right?
No, sir.
Correct. The only thing I'd like to add, as I know in my learning experience in the last seven months, I assumed that having evening meetings would be better, and yet we had a poll that we used here in the city, and people chose daytime meetings over evening meetings. So that was another example of where I thought something, and, and I realize that I, I agree with you. I've been here on Tuesdays that we didn't have meetings, and people show up on Tuesdays because they're used to our weekly meetings. But I will say, I think we're just moving, we're in a time now that people will need, you know, the information will be posted up here, but it is available online on a weekly basis and always posted on our website. And it's not, it's not perfect, and, and I realize people get in routines, but I, I do think that the efficiency, that it can help with the staff not having to spend times in weekly meetings, and, and also when we can consolidate things. So yes, Councilman.
Oh, and, and as a matter of fact, that was a part of that, I found out this morning. We're going to be, it's first, third, and so the fifth one is going to be a night meeting. Is, is that correct?
Yeah, that was.
Every fifth, every time there's a fifth Tuesday, that's going to be a night meeting.
Yeah, that was the feedback we got from council last meeting.
Yeah, so that's in line to be with, to have the nightly quarterly meeting that council had already initiated. So that was just to keep it on schedule. We hadn't, so, so that they, it would be properly advertised that.
I'm just saying, I can, I can remember that.
I, I was hoping to reverse it so that we would have.
So I'm sorry, so we are talking about, it's, it's, it's the first and third Tuesday every month, and the fifth Tuesday is a night meeting, and that's the consistency that we're looking for. But I understand this year, there's not that last one because it was on New Year's Eve.
Correct.
But outside of that one, it should be every fifth Tuesday, there's a night meeting.
Yes.
And then every first and third Tuesday, there's a day meeting.
Correct.
And Mayor, Mayor, even, even if we have a holiday on a Monday, we do not prepare, we get our packets and, and our, our agenda and everything through the week, and we post on Friday. So even if we had a holiday on a Monday, that still doesn't interfere with us having a Tuesday meeting, because even if someone was out of town, they're just out of town, you know, so.
Thank you. And Councilman Duryo?
So as far as consistency goes, you look out here, the people that's sitting here, most of the time, it's the people that's going to be at every meeting. Whoever wants to come to the meeting, they'll find out when it is, and they'll be here. And, and it's, and you can tell also by the night meeting. I mean, we, we maybe have less than this many people come to, when we have those night meetings. They just, they just don't go, don't go. And it's now, as far as being able to address something that was on the agenda, I just would like to say that this council, as far as, as long as I've been on it, has never been this transparent before. This is transparent as I've ever seen it. We put everything out at, we discuss at the meeting, everything is out in front of the public. We post it so the public could come up and comment on it. So as far as not being transparent, so we need to come up here every week or twice a week, that's just, I just don't agree with that at all. This is, and as the pastor said earlier, this council works well together, even when we disagree. We disagree and we move on. We keep the fussing upstairs or in the back. So we're transparent, and the folks that want to be here will find out when the meeting is, and they will be here. If they really concerned, they'll be here no matter when the meeting is. Unless it's like seven o'clock in the morning, then I won't be here. But, you know, so.
Councilman Getz?
So I'm looking at this proposed calendar, January of 24, and the first meeting is not on the first Tuesday, it's on the second Tuesday. Is that a mistake, or is that by design?
We weren't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, that's because there's, there was a holiday there, because we had a holiday there, and New Year's Eve, and which really impacted, and it was a new process. So we were just proposing to start the process in February rather than January.
But staff and city employers are going to be here on January the 2nd, right?
That day is, yeah.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, it's, it's passed, so to start.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why, why we did it, though. Okay, but you answered, so.
Well, basically, we took the feedback we got from council, and it was a discussion item, and we came back with this proposal for calendar meetings based upon that, based upon the proposition passed, and with council being able to set their meetings. And so we came up with this calendar for that.
So you want to start this in, in February?
February.
All right.
Can we call for the question?
That's awesome. So all those, it's been discussed, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving item number B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. What are we voting on? Are we voting for, are we voting for Councilman Turner's adjustments, or just B?
We're voting on B.
Just voting on B as written.
As written. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Wait, Mayor, you don't have, y'all just went straight into discussion?
I moved to approve B.
That's what I meant to say.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Did you get who?
Yeah.
The motion moved.
All right, it's, it has now been moved and seconded, item B. All those, all those, please signify by saying aye if you approve.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
What's the problem?
Yeah, we, it passed five, too.
No, no, we're, we're calling for the vote as written.
Yeah.
Yes. As, not, not an amendment, but as written. Okay, I just want to make sure, I understand.
All right. So now, Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, Mayor. Excuse me. Council consider a resolution approving change order number one submitted by Delk, construction for, for the Civic Center balcony guardrail modification located at 701 Main Street, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number one?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Is there any discussion on item number one?
Got a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir, Councilman Turner.
I know we have a vision set for 2035 where it includes the Civic Center, and I know I asked this meet, I asked this question prior to the meeting, but citizens wanted to know, would this construction actually not be an asset to the improvements we plan to make in the future? Would it kind of be counterproductive, or is it something to be beneficial for now?
So this is something that was, just to clarify, I guess Keith is coming, this is something that was to correct a mistake by our architect. They, when we put in the specs for the job, they, we bid it based on what they said we needed, and looking at it, it was not. And so they're going to pay to have that glass replaced so that it meets the requirement specs. But this is something that council approved way back in the gap, but I'll turn it back over to Keith.
Yeah, I think to answer your question, the, this improvement, you know, should stay in place no matter what they do. This will allow the balcony rail or the balcony seating to be able to be used and be safe for personnel. Since we're not using the retractable seating below, then that creates a hazard with that low balcony rail. So that's why this project came about, was to put this handrail, glass railing up to make it safe at balcony rail height, so we don't have anybody falling over that low wall, which was 26 inches high. And we need to be right at around 42 for a safe handrail situation. But the improvement should stay. I don't see that changing with any modifications to the center.
Councilman Duryo?
So I, I just noticed it on here, but I just wanted to make sure, basically, we happen to do this because the architect made a mistake.
Correct.
But they're going to pay for it.
Yes, between, between the architect and his insurance carrier, through the Arizona Mission clause in his insurance, they're taking care of it.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Neal?
Mayor, I need to abstain from this vote.
Okay. Any other comment? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council consider a resolution approving the award of an annual contract for custodial services for water utilities complex, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve. Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Brashstar Contracting, Inc. of Beaumont for the West Lucas Drive and Gladys Avenue Emergency Storm Sewer Point Repair and Cavity Repair Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number three. Any discussion? Councilman Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, the only real question I have is, is this is being done as emergency work, but in the write-up, this was first discovered in May of 2023, which is eight or nine months ago. What took us so long to figure out what's going on?
We had an imperfection in the road. We plated it off, and we proceeded to inspect the Lucas line. We felt that the plates were going to, going to hold until we got through that process, but unfortunately, it began failing around the plates to the point that we felt it was no longer safe to leave it plated without undertaking the work.
Has the study for the rest of Lucas come back yet?
Yes, we have.
And how many other bad spots do we have?
We have one other point repair that I'm aware of that'll have to be done, but it's not an emergency, so we'll end up bidding that out. And then there's a mount of grout injection and then lining of the pipe that's going to have to be done eventually. That's probably going to be submitted in the CIP for consideration this next budget process.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Council to consider an ordinance authorizing the city's participation in rate proceedings in 2024, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number four. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council considering ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024 budget, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, a question.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that the, our, our fund balance is. I just wanted to point out that the, our, our fund balance is actually in better shape than we originally projected. I appreciate the city manager and the staff working hard and, and bringing this to us and, and, and working hard to make sure that our budget stays healthy, but just wanted to point out the fact that our, our, our fund balance is in a better place. I think I'm looking for it. I think we're at 24%, if I'm correct. Is that right, City Manager? It was 24 instead of what, 22 or?
Yes, well, we were projecting just over 20 in our proposed budget. And at this point in time, snapshot time, it's approximately 24. And Cheryl, you're in June, if y'all want to add something on that, please feel free.
Yes, that's, that's what we're showing at this time. Of course, we haven't completed all the entries that are necessary for the audit, but we feel like we are going to be in better shape than what we originally thought we would be, so.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Durio?
I just had one question. I was looking at it and there's a, a PEG fund. What, what are those funds used for?
Those are used for technology upgrades. I think they're, we're going to use it for some of the, the improvements that are going to be down here. Also, the Channel Four improvements will be done with that.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six, please?
Counsel consider a request for specific use permit to allow, allow an RV recreational vehicle parked within GCMD, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling District for property located at 5497 Fennett Road. And it comes with the recommendation of approval with the following conditions. The project will, will require an approved drainage plan to ensure the runoff for the proposed conditions equals that of the existing conditions for the 100-year storm event using Atlas 14 rainfall data per drainage district number six. Number two shall be in strict compliance with section 24 dot 06 dot 008 minimum standards for type C recreational vehicle park of the city's code of ordinance, ordinances and all applicable fire and building codes. And three, all lighting installed shall be directionally shielded from the residential properties located east and south of the subject site.
Is there a mo, is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve the specific use permit with the conditions.
Second.
It's been, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a social services business within the RCR, Residential Conservation Revitalization District for property located at 1890 Broadway Street, and it comes with the recommendation of approval with the following conditions. One, construction plans must meet all requirements by Water Utilities for Water and Sanitars Sewer Services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment and or fog program. And two, construction plans shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve with the conditions.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number seven. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now's the time for council member comments, and I will begin with Councilman Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of things. Well, I think we already answered Mr. Pete's question. I was going to ask, answer that. And also, Mr. Crabbe, I certainly will look into that asphalt on Avenue A and Avenue C. Did you get that, Bart? Okay. Also, I would just ask folks, I, I noticed this, we're sitting up here, the work we do, nobody's trying to hide anything from anybody. It's very transparent. Some people automatically have seen that we're always trying to do something bad, and it's our intention to do, always be doing what's in the best interest of the citizens of Beaumont and always be doing what we were elected to do, and that serves the people. That's, that's why we're here. Not trying to hide anything, not trying to be sneaky, not trying to get something by you. We, we, we're very transparent. City manager brings stuff before us that he doesn't have to, that he could just do it if he wanted to within his job description, but he brings it before us so it can be before y'all. So we're not trying to hide anything. And last but not least, happy birthday to my sister. She's always watching. Happy birthday, Penny Durio.
Councilman Getz?
I had a citizen post something on social media earlier today about some improvements that need to be made at Rogers Park. Mr. Manager, you've probably even, even seen that email forwarded it to you, but just for the record, there is a, a playground structure there that has had some orange mesh netting covering the area where a slide was removed. That's been there for over a year, and I, I need to get a status report on when we're going to get a new slide to replace that or other piece of equipment to be able to make that structure whole. There was also a piece of metal sticking out that could be a hazard to a child, and we need to look into having that removed. And then there was a problem with the ground out there where it had shifted and there were some holes and, yeah, the ground was cracking real bad. So if we can look at that and get back to them, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, Councilmember, I, I saw your email right before the meeting and, and I forwarded to the appropriate staff and, and they are already working on it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilman Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. For me, Mr. Manager, I just got a major concern where we had several citizens come to the dais and speak in reference to recreational activities and recreational programs. And I know we put emphasis on getting some of these things accomplished through the city. So I just want to, if possible, maybe soon, coming up on one of the upcoming agendas, maybe just a update report, kind of how Lauren speaks about what's coming up, maybe to let them know some of the programs, some of the recreational things we actually have going. I know you're going to work on some things next week and get back with us, but I think that'd be good in the future to kind of let them know some of these recreational things coming up. I know we approved a striping machine to utilize for some of the fields in our parks, so maybe we can assist with some of these teams that don't have a place to practice or play with some of the striping. I don't know if the football little league is going on right now, but maybe reach out to one of the citizens that's coming to the dais and see if we can work something out with them. Another thing that's a big concern of mine is I've had several citizens that's been walking and exercising throughout our parks and the dead trees, like they're, they're concerned that they may fall or, you know, it's just a lot of dead trees, specifically at Terrell Park and Rogers Park. It, it looks pretty bad with the trees over there. So if we can kind of look into those and see if we can get them addressed or see if we can create a plan to address them, I'd appreciate it.
All right, just the, the dead trees, we, we have a comprehensive program on the dead trees and staff is working diligently on those, in particular in, in Terrell Park. But yeah, it's a priority and, and we're working on it, but we'll make sure that we're getting, getting the things done and, and if we could get feedback, if someone notices where some that we haven't, we'd be glad to get that information.
I go in Terrell Park every day and they, they're taking trees down out there every day, every day.
Thank you. Is that all, Councilman Turner? Councilman Fellshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Just encourage everyone, when you bump into an officer like Officer Riley, please let them know that we appreciate them, whether it's city, county, or state. Also, last week, Chief Singletary announced his retirement, and I don't mean to steal the mayor's thunder, but would like to say that bittersweet, it's a well-earned retirement. He served over 50 years, I believe. And so he's earned the right, but hate to lose a man of that character and that caliber. A generation is, is moving on and it's always difficult to see that. We appreciate Chief Singletary and his faithful service to this community. So congratulations to him and make sure you let the law enforcement know that we appreciate them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Fellshaw. Councilman Samuel?
Well, I pass a lot of times on public comments, but, and this one might not be too appropriate, but I'm going to do it anyway. I'm going to express my thoughts. You know, after having gone through this past holiday season and then going to the courthouse every day, I think we as people have to do a better job of looking and actually seeing the people we encounter every day. It's one thing to look at people, but to see them, a lot of people are close to the edge. There are people that need help. The government is failing them. Washington's failing them. The state fails them. Sometimes we fail them. But someone cut in front of me, and my first response was, what the? But I don't know what that person was going through. I could have said something that could have caused them to react and I react, and that would have been a tragic reaction. I guarantee you, I can't go from here back to my office and encounter, not see someone that obviously is going through something. So I just say to each one of us, especially our employees, we need to really try to see the people that we encounter every day. We might not be able to do anything to help them at that time, but we could be the one that don't push them over the edge by just showing a little love. That's my thought today, and I just wanted to share that with each one of you. I don't know who heard it, but somebody heard it.
Thank you, Councilman. Adam Attorney?
Happy New Year, everyone, and Happy National Law Enforcement Day to my favorite girls in the room. Thank y'all for all you do.
Cheryl?
I think somebody has a birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday, Councilmember Neal, early. And happy, and happy Law Enforcement Day, ladies.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Happy birthday, Councilmember Neal. To recognize everyone on Law Enforcement Day, we recognize for the job that they do and we appreciate it. Just, and also I'd like to acknowledge Chief Singletary and his work and dedication to the city. It's been a, been a quite a commitment, you know, get 53-year commitments from anyone, in particularly law enforcement, because it can be such a challenging position. So thanks for what he did. Just a quick comment too, I had mentioned to council, I'll be giving you an update on the process for selecting a new chief. I think Councilmember Durio mentioned, you know, city manager having ability to do some things, we want to be transparent and work with that, so I'll be seeking full support from city council or input from council. But I want to make this a community process where the entire community, we get input from this community because it's one of the key positions in a city. So we, we're going to be putting things in place to be able to get that feedback from this community and the people of this community for their position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Councilman Durio?
One, one quick point addressing the, one of the proclamations today, there's a movie on Prime called Sounds of Freedom, and it's about child traff, trafficking and slavery, and it's based on a true story. And I watched it the other night and it's very good and it's, it's, it opens your eyes to a lot of things that go on. But it's on Prime and it's pretty good. You might want to check it out. Sounds of Freedom.
Okay. Hey, Lisa here? Okay, and thank you, Councilman Durio. You got three comments. And I didn't know, because it's not on Facebook yet, that it's Councilman Neal's birthday tomorrow, so. And, and certainly Councilman Durio's sister's birthday. We wish them all happy birthday. With National Law Enforcement Day, certainly all our police officers, not just our city, but our county and state and constables and all, we certainly appreciate the work they put in every day and keeping us safe. And we tend to have an expectation of safety, and that's because of the job that they do for us on a daily basis. Certainly grateful for Crime Stoppers and also the Abolish Human Trafficking Junior League. And Tanya Castleton stayed the whole time, and I have the privilege of, on Thursday, I'm meeting with the mayor of Lake Charles with the Junior League of Beaumont and the Junior League of Lake Charles. We're meeting halfway in Orange. I didn't really measure it, but I think it's pretty close to halfway. And in terms of how our cities can partner and certainly the, I, I've been informed a lot on what human trafficking, especially youth human trafficking, looks like in our city, and I was unaware of it until I got educated because I've only seen movies. And, and the movies didn't portray it that accurately. Well, maybe on an international scale. But certainly appreciate all the public comments. Some other important news is everybody knows that we've got MLK Day this coming Monday, and this Saturday, we're going to have a parade that I can say from personal participation is probably the largest parade in Beaumont, and that will be this Saturday morning, and it begins down at, at LIT and going on from the park there. So certainly recommend that everybody get out there. It's on social media and there's a lot of information about it. Also, certainly grateful for Chief Jimmy Singletary, 13 years as police chief and the 53 years in law enforcement. And it's been said a lot, I mean, anybody that can give that much of his life and that much of his heart to the community is, is certainly, we appreciate that and we're grateful, we're grateful for him. With, I've also been in conversation with Chris Robertson, who is the executive director of some other place. And next week, it is going to be extremely cold, and they have already made plans to open up some other place. They, they have a gymnasium multipurpose center that they've got cots from the Red Cross. They also are going to have their kitchen. So people are, the homeless community, he is working with the American Red Cross to see, but he feels like they can pretty well accommodate it with what they have. They're getting some volunteers, but he is reaching out to organizations, and he's texted me since I've been up here and saying that he's had a good bit of success with that. So, and the people in the public, oftentimes people are very concerned about the homeless as they should be when we have these excessive temperatures, whether it's too hot or too cold. Recognize that there is an option for them, and one of them's going to be some other place, and they, people are going to be allowed to spend overnight. They are going to be able to be there in the day. You will still see some homeless outside in these terrible temperatures. And, but don't just assume that it's because they have nowhere to go. And if you're hearing my voice right now and you'll be able to check on that, there is an option for them. And, and we will be looking to utilize Beaumont buses as necessary as having talked to the city manager, that's something that's going to be looked at, but it's also on a need. But having a place for them to be able to go and for them to be able to be fed is certainly a huge thing, and I, I'm grateful for some other place and the other organizations that he is working with that have, that has taken the step to be prepared in advance because oftentimes it can, people aren't aware of it until it seems to happen. And the other thing is I certainly support what Councilman Turner has said about our youth initiatives, and I know that we have, we, we see the need and having had conversations with our city manager and this council, I know that we all see that need, and getting organizations to work together is an ongoing process, but I do think we are making process, progress. But oftentimes, most of the time, progress is slower than I'd like for it to be. But oftentimes, most of the time, progress is slower than I'd like for it to be on the items that I'm thinking about. But I know that we can keep, I appreciate the fact that we are moving forward in this. And this is a, a problem that's not going to get better on its own. It's not something that we can just wait for, in my opinion. And with that, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for being here.